Four session. Calvert Town Council. Kevin's giving us. His life history.
Pictures.
I prepared this dissertation in hopes that, no, one of the things that. The intent of this is not to be comprehensive, but rather a summary to open up dialogue with questions that the council may have. A lot of moving parts during the course of the year. Many of these are utility projects as you're going to see. Sometimes I feel like I'm coming in and it's so reactionary. Especially in the last couple of years, obviously, since I started with the Dunes project and some of the things that keeps changing. We're getting some moving bars on projects and messaging is changing coming into us, different sources. So I wanted to try to provide an update. In a formatted way, if there's anybody that knows me knows that I need to stay structured or be on the loose, it's not a good thing. So you're going to get a project history that's brief, and I hope that any questions that you might have coming into this, you can ask later. Scope of work is really boiled down to incremental steps that we're taking or what project really entails. The timeline is cute and it's always, you know how it works, it's flexible, but that's the best estimate we have. And then the funding piece, I didn't go quite into the detail, that's why Karen's here, if there's any questions concerning funding. The pictures are just there because I feel like I needed to add to the page count and I thought these were really. Tasteful photos of our projects and I think that would maybe, no, they're there to help indicate, sometimes we're referencing parts and pieces that. They're not directly, I mean, I didn't know what, you know, the primary was, so I took a tour to the wastewater plant, so. They're there. We'll begin probably with the number one project that's on our list for this year. That's getting ready to launch and tonight will be approving. Peerless are being asked for approval, peerless recommendations from Midwestern. The project history began and I'm going to go kind of off my own thing, the notes speak for themselves. This has been a moving target for us a little bit. One of the questions that has been raised, or at least addressed. Sort of, or asked of me from council, there's the word. This project changed on us in 2010, the fall of last year, 2024. We were moving along with the Dunes, things were looking good, that's why this became relevant. We wanted to make sure our capacities were such that we're responsible for the build. Also allowing us some capacity on the backside of the build to be able to continue future development. When 2024, I.D.M. gave us a report back that was kind of a shock to us. They, they, they did a report on our five worst days. That's how they calculate. And one of the days also was that what we refer to as the Davis Street leak, is that how we're referring to it? Yeah, and we had massive loss that day, but there's nothing we could do, there was no appeal process, that fact, yeah. So we've got capacity numbers that came back and they're looking at our worst case scenario day. Where would your capacity be? And that's one of the difficult parts about Calvert, as you guys know, is that we fluctuate so much in our capacities with our, our utilities. So we had to plan for the worst day, essentially. What that indicated was our filter capacity was fine, sitting above about 583, somewhere in there, and some change. What we didn't have was this significant flow. Our aerator prevented us, as well as our service pumps, from putting the water in that we might need in that, in a worst case scenario into that filter. And more importantly, we needed to increase the flow capacity in order to ensure that we'd have fifteen to twenty percent on our worst day capacity for future development. That kind of triggered a whole different discussion with the project. We looked at a twenty-year-plus-old aerator, keeping in mind that it was still serviceable, probably wasn't needing, needing replaced immediately, but something that was on our list. The service pumps did need to probably be replaced for the capacity. And we're just now bringing on well C and well B from improvements that are going to be standalone pumps, our standalone wells. A well A will be a good reserve well for us moving forward and can always be flipped on to supplement, right?
In the wintertime.
Sound good? Okay, so the project itself is centered around a flow project rather than a filter capacity project. It's gonna, we've been given estimates that it's going to put us back even on our worst day at fifteen to twenty percent additional capacity, which is good room for. We're not going to put another housing three hundred unit in, but it's going to give us room for some room when we're approached. And so with responsible project, if you go down to the funding and the timelines, we're going to open bids, if we open bids, excuse me, in June. We're coming up for the, we're coming up basically for the contractor award tonight, and they're going to provide us a time schedule on the backside of that, so it's a little bit open-ended.
He's coming tomorrow.
Coming tomorrow for the meeting, correct?
What time is that?
Okay, good. The funding, we offset this with the GeoBond. This got a little tricky for us because you guys know that the Peerless bid came in high, higher than we thought. Bob and I sat down with Midwestern and Peerless, we removed some, some of the. I guess we could consider them wants rather than the needs of it, that one of it was filter material or aesthetics. Okay, so we trimmed about two hundred thousand. A fat, I guess if you want to look at it that way, fat out of the project, we got it back down into the seven ninety range. We, after we bought the. The meters with the GeoBond, as well as the software and some of the improvements that we intend on that end. We had about six eighty, I think six seventy, six eighty left in that GeoBond. We approached the redevelopment for two hundred thousand and we granted that two hundred thousand, so we are in a responsible range. Project now and, and between those two combined fund sources. So we're good and it allows for a little bit of overage too. The one thing that we will have to examine on the backside, and I don't think it's going to be a large gap. We've got everything ready for the meters in terms of the material, what we're going to need is the install fees and we don't have that yet, we haven't, all right, we haven't set the R.P. out. So we don't know that number yet, we're anticipating maybe fifty to ninety thousand dollar gap there, but we'll.
Four percent?
The install, the meters themselves, we, that bid, the GeoBond bought the software, bought the material, so we've got that.
We can, but it'll take years. We hire one company to do it all at once, it'll take. Through three months. And it'll all be changed. Other than the ones, I went back to the records, the ones that are not. Five years or newer, we're going to keep. Everything older than five years, brand new meter.
So, quick question on your details, so Kevin, on the aerators that we're upgrading.
There's just one.
And the service pumps?
The aerators, that big aluminum box out back.
So we're, did we, when we did the plant upgrade, is that the aerator engineer kind of put in at that plant or was it from before?
That was existing. When we did the 2016 plant upgrade, we did need the extra capacity. We built in the filter to be able to be upgradable with this project, this aerator, two service pumps. And that gets us to six hundred, otherwise we would have to add a new filter to this project. Since we've looked forward in 2016, we don't have to get this.
And I knew part of my question is, what comes of some of that equipment they take out, do you get credit anywhere?
No.
Is it available or?
I mean, we can put it out for municipal bid, but.
Well, some of it's as old as it was.
The aerators.
Last upgrade, right?
The aerator is early two thousands. Two service pumps that are coming out or.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, if there were some things that need replaced with the last upgrade or?
I will ask the question, yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I'm naive about equipment or what comes of it.
I joked around with Peerless to ask them if we get a credit for it, but. I got a joking response back, so it's not a serious question yet, but it's coming.
That makes you wonder if we should pull anything, like we would a truck or something. Who knows?
There will be insufficient for our needs, you'll have zero value to us, so anything we get is possible.
Anything else on that?
No, I was just curious.
I mean, yeah, absolutely. Before we, I kind of do, one by one, I'll go however you guys want after terms of proceeding, but any questions on the financial end or?
How long's the GeoBond? Five years.
And that, so the GeoBonds basically covered the stuff we had in it, part of that list was this project. It just happens that fell two hundred thousand short, we got that through S.R.C. So far, all the projects we have listed are covered between the.
What do you mean by list?
The projects we had outlined for the GeoBond.
GeoBond, yes, I just wanted to make sure you were talking about the rates.
Software, this, I know there's other projects too.
Right, that's.
That's what the meters, what we talked about with the meters and the software and also with.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get my head around creating these different ones. But this covers versus what we have to spell covered for that.
So for tonight's conversation, yeah, because that might come up, nothing from the rates are going to cover this. For the, for the water plant. You know, look over to Karen to make sure I'm not getting stink eye, but that's right, right? And also. The rates have nothing to do with the Dunes infrastructure because that's TIF supported all from the development of the property, right? That's going to be something that might come up, district clarity, say.
It's actually more slow, low focus more than a capacity.
That's the way I understood, that's kind of the way we're thinking about it, yep. So it's because the force died in 2016, we had capacity.
We said, I think we did our water tower in two, but in the second one.
Water tower. Moving on, the Dunes? Like years away, doesn't it? Uh, moving on with project history, as you guys drew it by probably on South Main, we're moving and it's looking good. Uh, the ready portion of the, the grant is going to be done here and closed, well, careful. It's going to have it in the ground and the last probably payout is coming here in August. Um, if not already, uh, we'll be processing that, it should be close. We had a little conversation about some of the bond stuff the other day, but it's all good with the accrued interest and working through that. The one thing that I think is important. With this project right now is, is keeping an eye on what we're doing in that first phase and how we're proceeding forward. They are moving at a significant rate and so far, there's been conversations that are really flirting around with how we're going to enter into that second bond agreement. And I go back at the economic development agreement every time that we discuss this. The project has commitments within the economic development for phase one, it has specific qualifications, both infrastructure in terms of housing. What they have, the developer has to accomplish and commit to. The one point five million dollars that will be issued in the second bond upon completion of the first phase of residential, what they're currently working on. Is contingent upon us accepting the infrastructure through the approval of the town, taking ownership of it, as well as fulfilling their commitment to the housing. There is very specific language on the type of housing and I've listed it down below in the build phase one, you can see it. Now, I, I, I think there's room in terms of changing a duplex to a house. And that's within the developer's rights, there's nothing within the economic development agreement that necessarily excludes that. What we have to be mindful of is there was a unit commitment. The reason we have to be mindful of that unique, our unit commitment is because that drives our ready payment. On the bond. And having that development was based, was assessed by Baker Tilly, the value of that is what. Went into the assessed A V above the base value and that's what we're capturing. So we have to ensure that they are giving us the assessed value that was assessed by Baker Tilly. There's no reason to suspect they won't, they just might get eager for the release of that second bond to start on that second phase. I ask the council to be mindful of that, as the conversations that Bob and I both had, we have flirted with that idea, and I think, Bob, you will attest to this. We've made it incredibly clear that there are, we're not making the decision, the economic development contract that you signed did. So I just want to make sure that we're mindful of that and, and, and keep an eye on that. Build phase two is also there, that's where you're going to get the, on the south side of the property, you're going to get your more single, more, wow, I'm not horrible with English, right? You're going to get seventy-three single-family homes there, condos they're calling it, but they're detached structure condos. So that's quite a bit of assessed value going into that as well. You can see some of those pretty pictures of them putting in the infrastructure, these were taken to, for Terran up in, up north, the proof that we're putting in, ready infrastructure. There's not a whole lot to do right now other than being mindful what they're putting in. Bob and I are currently in conversations about streetlights and I assure you, you haven't lived until you've really gotten into municipal decorative lighting. One of the things that is an issue currently is that the developer wants to put in lighting that. While being functional as L E D, it, it, it has the appearance of a parking lot, it's much more designed for a parking lot. There are large steel posts that go up with the, the outreach and the arm coming out with, with a light overhang. Incredibly functional, does very little to fight the imagery that this is somehow attached to town or not a parking lot or. As some of the descriptions have provided, um, a military base. So Bob correctly pushed back initially, joined the club after listening to him, that this doesn't do what we want it to do. It's very functional and there are larger parking lots at the apartments, that's fine. What we need along the streets is something that integrates this town. We need that flow. So we approached the, the developer to consider, um, very similar lights to what we have in Main Street, but at a better price point. A little bit more affordable for developer and not quite as many, they don't have to be functionally lighting the street out there because of where we're at. We need them to kind of create a flow and a connection to town.
High enough to create enough light though, I thought that was the reason higher lights were needed for growth.
That was the argument that was given, if you're doing an interchange out at I sixty-five or any major highway, thirty-one, yes.
Do they meet N dot specs?
That's what I'm wondering.
Plenty functional for a twenty mile an hour subdivision?
And, and, and the N dot specs necessarily don't directly apply?
No, to the municipal, local.
I get that, I get a lot of developers want to say.
They do, I'm sure you do. And they did, by the way, good anticipation.
Now, have they agreed to this new?
We're discussing it, we're moving, yeah, and there's a compromise and it was, it was an interesting meeting this week. Where a lot of people got their heads. There's, there's a wall, I'm sure, um, but yeah, we're moving forward.
Did we put anything in line?
The economic development.
No, it's in the bond.
Yeah.
Bond.
For, for the first phase of economic development agreement, the way it reads is that the second. So the first portion, the one point three was for the ready match and for that portion of the, modern super specific. There was another one point, oh, actually one point nine in that first release for the. One point five was still left, in order to obtain that one point five, the developer has to prove one point five million dollars worth of infrastructure improvement. Specifically, streets, roads, curves are mentioned within that portion, and then they did a wonderful thing, it's legal still. And any other improved, or, or any other significant improvement to the infrastructure design. So that leaves a lot of room, streetlights could be included in. The thing is, we don't have to accept, we can accept everything else about the municipal infrastructure, roads, trees, we can leave the streetlights out. It's not a deal breaker, but it's something we might, we're trying to work, or it's not happening to get to that point, right?
But Kevin, will we have, I know we have. Streetlights on Jefferson, not in the paddocks, those do not match.
Correct.
Will we have, I'm not saying we should, but will we have. Same lights going downtown all the way through the inner south, into town and then just. Going to the.
Yes.
Dunes, everything.
That's what we're asking for, that's what we're, that's why we're asking. Dana, for example, we're going to come to you tonight to the council and ask for, uh, five lights to be installed during the Lake Shore project with the money that we. We captured by not having to match as much, we still have some Karen set aside funds for a match that we don't have to have because we save money on it. We're going to reapply some of that savings towards putting in some streetlights down Lake Shore Drive from ten into Academy to kind of bring that flow.
That wanted to be so.
Yeah, and one of the things we're hearing from business owners and from the comprehensive plan is that connectivity.
There's three there now, we're going to add four, five, four there, one of the, one of the.
We'd be adding some down in the cemetery along the trail.
Ultimately, you're, you're jumping ahead of me a little bit, but yeah.
I don't think they got, because I know in S.R.C. it was. They were so expensive, they only.
They think them out.
That's why we're going to add some up there.
Remember, did we get one down to the old?
I think there's three or four from Mill South.
That's why I was.
But it's spread out.
Yeah, because otherwise it's like, why are we connecting ghost town at South Townes Town?
It needs to be, it needs to be.
Yeah, I'm just saying, get something between Mill Street and the Dunes if we're going to.
There's a feed through there, but it's not.
Agreed, and then School Street's another area. Along by the high school, down that. School Street's another area that eventually in the future, we're, we're planning kind of a connectivity type thing through lighting, then.
Yeah.
Definitely fit in as well. I think so.
Well, that was that way because the developer didn't want, so they had a Nitsco light and stuff.
I mean, we didn't have to agree that.
Oh, we had to agree with what it read.
That neighborhood.
Right. One of the things that, I'm sorry, I'm going to kind of. Going to move off that, right back to this real quick, tactically, um, on the back, you'll see a, a map, obviously, it's drunk, I don't. Uh, phase one and phase two is what we've been referring to, phase one is currently going on, that's the commitment on the first bond A that was issued. And these will be filled, bond B is phase two that you're looking at, that's the allocation area three that we just created. And separated that, just make sure that we're having a conservative reading of statutes, one tip bond per allocation. That's, that's one of the three there.
One of the maps I've seen has these few houses out here.
Yeah, we, the, the ten house, no, the ten house is out there, yeah. Yeah, it's been a shifting, it was, and when we created the allocation area, those were redistributed into that allocation area. Which is, yeah, no, it's have its stages with payment of that bond too.
Hey Kevin, I can't tell if, uh, it looks like it might be Golf Cart Trail.
It is.
Is within the thing, are they putting a sidewalk on the edge of the property like they did with the toy barn?
You mean down South Main?
Yeah.
Yeah, if they do, we're going to really get into the whole idea of how that goes in, I, no, I have not heard that.
Okay. That. I mean, I, I remember talking to them about it when we were having early discussions about putting. Because they agreed to put a sidewalk next to a toy barn there.
Yes.
To kind of connect our trail that's on the opposite side of this development.
That's right.
Down to the.
So.
Yeah, we figured if there were, if you wanted to walk around the lake, there'd still be at least more sidewalk getting you.
You can cross the road there, we'll have to probably look at that for road crossings to get to that path on the cemetery.
It's going to be nice looking.
Absolutely, and then there is another relief on the golf cart trail, um, coming in, topping north here, town. You'll see it on the northeast corner, the right-hand corner, that's the, um, golf cart path that we give it down.
Okay.
On that corner, where everybody's taking a look at.
Another question, Gavin, is there any occupancy, we're a month or two away?
We ain't told that yet.
How many have been sold?
We don't have that answer for you, Dave. I've been told three, but I don't have that from. I, I'm not going to answer because I don't have that confirmed by now. I know that Alan gave me a call last week, wanted me to know that five single slab units are coming on above that single slab, no basement, it's a better way of phrasing it. They're fourteen hundred square foot, they are three-bedroom, two-bath, two-car garage homes coming in at a price point somewhere around three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And that's what, well within the market price range of here. And that's not going to be the lowest price point for the homes. They're also going to be bringing on the, the, the single flats, patio flats they're calling them. I anticipate those prices being lower, he seems to think the duplexes are going to sell higher. Because those are, what did he say, this for four thousand?
Four thousand.
Four thousand square foot each duplex on each side, that is enormous. I know, Kevin, your face is very similar. Either Kevin had bad Taco Bell or he's, yeah, no, I was the same way. It was surprising to me that, that large. And that's something that he's, I think they're now starting to have this thought that maybe that many duplexes. Good idea, don't you get that?
Oh, I got it, I heard it a lot, not really my problem, anyway, we'll see.
Maybe some adjustments, yes. Here's our next best friend, if I may. Okay, wastewater plant, uh, we were moving pretty, wouldn't say fast, but we felt like we were moving toward the project on this that was going to be. You know, online this year probably. And several things have kind of hit a pause on this a little bit, uh, while we try to collect some data. One of the things that became clear with the transition of Midwestern, really honestly, a different eye started looking at the plant. And we're starting to get a different consideration here. We thought we had a, a repair scenario and a replace, we're looking at a, or excuse me, rebuild, we're looking at a replace scenario. This is based upon one price point, or that one engineer, one firm's talking to us. The way that it was presented to Bob and I most recently, as the transition of Midwestern happened, was you can spend four to. Five million dollars on a seven to ten-year project that repair wouldn't happen. Or you can spend ten to eleven million and get a thirty-year plan. That changes the parameters, I think, in terms of cost benefit. I don't know that for a fact, what I am acutely aware of and having conversation with Bob and Karen and some of you individually is that. We have a new consideration to put forth of us in terms of the decision-making. Do we want to replace rather than repair what's there? I think Bob and I are in agreement that we would give a recommendation to the council to consider that scenario value. What that looks like is a question. So the first question really becomes to the council, do we want to repair or replace? I think both are still in play, especially after lunch we had, we did have lunch with Scott Seiple to discuss with United Engineering some different options. And we're in agreement that we'd like to shop around and get some opinion on this.
So Scott looked at it the first time there. Then Mark looked at it second time.
Mark's desk.
And it's.
We walked through it, we walked through it and it's. Don't disagree, let's put it that way.
Can it be repaired, it's the answer is yes.
Yes.
And that's the only scenario we ever presented to them.
What you're buying for your buck is a lot greater. If you spend twice the money, you get four times your life.
So the follow-up conversation we had that was. Before they did this little.
Yes, and we're still on that scenario, I think.
So everything that we talked about with the rain increase doesn't really include this project.
Exactly.
Okay.
And, and, and underneath funding, we'll, we'll hit it. I say that, the immediate, and I look at Karen for the stink eye again, immediately, no. It does not, we're, we're looking at scenarios that don't freeze.
Yeah, because I remember the original space that we got was.
If you made a decision tonight to go new, it'd be three years before it even, we'd even put a show. Not a verifying, design, pick who's going to design it.
And on the, in the sort of, remember, we, we just, a bond just fell off about a year and a half ago. And so we're still collecting money as though we were paying for that one, and it was significant. So, um, I think with that already in place, we're, we're building up that fund. For some sort of initial payment plus possibly taking other funds in the future.
Yeah.
And you see, you know, one of the things that's been talked about, state with all the fun, that kind of stuff, so. There are scenarios, one thing that I really liked, and this is another, this is another area that Bob's still looking at different systems, it's the SBR system, the secret's back. I've learned this, by the way, the secrets badge.
Go, come on.
Reactor system. I had to learn that, it made me memorize it, it's a really interesting system, some of the, I know, I put it in there, by the way, I always write the full form, then the abbreviated. The, um, what we're looking at is a system that is probably less intensive in terms of man-hours, it has a smart system to it, it can adjust to rainwater events. To control flow for treatment, become efficient in energy that way, because treatment obviously is less when you're diluting with rainwater in the system. It, it's, it's a smart system. It is, allows our operators to kind of focus on some of the lab work, some of the things that we need, a little less labor-intensive than what's there currently. And you've mentioned the pictures that they included, wonderful, but. It's a system that allows us a greater flexibility of designing to, it's not quite a space, we have the space currently at the plant.
Eighty-eight by forty-four square is the only footprint that.
We were pitched a single vendor and what Bob is trying to do right now is go around to different vendors and get some different information and different price points on them. And make sure it's the system we want in terms of it.
Yeah.
And it, it does have some benefits to it as well with the decanters and I'm learning all this interesting. Never learned about wastewater, but.
Can you say it? Is it connected online, the way like your TV is or your?
You have the ability to look at stuff from phone, but I don't think you could change it so it won't get into the cyber. It may.
But you can definitely monitor.
Yeah. You, you can look at your phone and say which pump's running, what cycle it's in, because the way it works, there's, there's two tanks, all the wastewater goes into one. When it gets a certain level, it shuts off and starts its treatment, and the other one starts filling. Then they just, all day long. That treatment process is more efficient for our ups and downs. Ben and I went and visited Topeka. Ben and I went and visited Topeka. And they like it. There's some sample pulling. It's very time sensitive, so they can't be changing a water meter at eight twelve. So I mean, that'd be a learning curve, but it'd be more efficient than activated sludge.
There's some repairs to the headworks, so we wouldn't be doing a bank through overhaul there. We can repair our headworks. Cost efficiently, at least that's what we told. One of the nice things too, considering the system, is it gives us a chance to get rid of the boring treatment. Way more efficient, less chemical.
So do you think if if you took. Got. Art and undetermined and all said, here's our plan, give us some options. But do you think this is the logical? Option that would be emerging in those scenarios?
Mark is the one that turned us on to SBR. Back when I started with my wastewater, SBR was junk. Computers have came a long way. So now it's, it took two months for me to get under my mind that if not a junk system. Most of it was talking to the operators at Topeka. It's came a long way and it's.
It's a difficult question to answer too, because they've been. For me, it's 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 a price point. It's a cost benefit. What do we give for the money? It's it's per year, right? And we're we're, things that will factor into it. It's not just the longevity of the planet. It's also about our operators. Guys that are out there in in creating an environment that they can do the job. We've gotten some IDM letters. And you know, right, I've addressed them and there are some changes that need to be made. What I'm hoping to do is we give the council enough options. And prices by going out and look, I I'm just saying, I think the next step to the project is. Let's get some data for you guys to make your decision on.
Yeah, I mean, I'm getting in my head around the ten or eleven. Getting overdesigned, who isn't? I know, like, I know what Rochester's paying for a whole new system. And they've got collection expansion also going on. And I'm in enough communities to know, these are always costly projects.
The stuff that we did, like the headworks and all that stuff, that'll stay. Just a treatment facility or a portion of a chain.
Yeah, well, part of the problem was I was here with the first upgrade and it was. One point three million and my head's still on the one point three million.
We all struggle with that same thought.
But yeah, that I think that's the reason why I want to try to get as many options ready as possible. Cause no matter what we choose, there's gonna be a price point. And to be able to give you guys their at least different perspectives from different companies. And some cost analysis that we can use for comparative. Think it's it's responsible. So we're kind of, I wouldn't say we're slowing it down. But we're gonna hold back and try to redirect um and try to get some data.
Can't slow it down too much.
We can't. We need a lot. We got a lot of.
Well, and it impacts not just the the impact three shores of the lake to. Great ways.
It won't be so much as a capacity. I mean, we will get more capacity out of it. But we don't want to go too much, because if you go over that million gallon a day, then it's a whole set of effort.
That gives us more quality and efficiency.
Efficiency is a lot. Liability and it gets built alongside our plan. Okay, so you don't have to try to repair as you.
Did you say that you decommission the old something?
Yes, those are like.
Okay. This three halves, yes, we are.
There's a, there is an oxidation ditch, there's a lupine. We don't have the real estate for that, so those two are right off. If there is something other than fix what we have in SBR, I don't know. Without real estate. And that's we're kind of jammed in that footprint.
Hope you guys don't want on West Shore here, but we're. Uh Lake Shore Drive project. Uh initiated the project improved safety. This is right out of the uh the description project description that we submitted for the grant, but um. Pleasingly, uh it came in under bid or under expectation at five thirty seven. Um that project's go for this fall, the timeline down below, you you'll see it. Um Amber reached out this week and started. I haven't either, but uh I'll reach out through tomorrow and make sure. Um October twenty twenty five is the anticipated project completion. We'll be widening down there at uh ten. And bringing it down to Academy. Um Bob, you want to comment some more about what this scope of work is looking like on that, other than the widening will have storm?
It's gonna be some stormwater improvements. Right now up by Mrs. Winter's house, where you're pulling apart the shop. You noticed the topography hit. There's no place for stormwater to go. We're gonna pull up a, bring a stormwater pipe up to that. There's some antiquated sanitary sewer up by a liquor store that's gonna get replaced. One light bulb's getting shoved over it will curb that whole side. Could have a nice clean instead of just a dirt. Get curbed to their uh sidewalk. The curb box exist or. Sidewalks existing on on the west side. I haven't decided yet. Cause we'd have to replace one sidewalk to delete it. The only thing I don't like about it is it leaves all that dirt on the sidewalk.
Yeah, that's true.
Other than that.
Well, we add five new street lights. Four there. The funding is brought to you by the good people of the. We across the grant, matching grant and uh twenty five percent match. That's going down to twenty percent. First of our community. No, we didn't put lighting.
That's coming across your desk here in about an hour.
No, we asked Karen, so what are we gonna do with that savings from the matching? Um yeah, I did get added it. But it's a go. Um one of the things that I'd like to direct council to consider is, you know, anytime that we widen. That one of the issues becomes um pacifying traffic through there, uh because it encourages speed. We already have. Maybe a pre-existing issue in there with speed, so that may be a future conversation or consideration for ideas on how if that does come up. And that might be something that you're out on the street, somebody brings up. Um you know, we're already down to that fault away and it can become a drag strip by. Certain parents, certain schools around that area, and we need to make sure that we're being mindful if that becomes an increasing issue. Just kind of forward thinking.
Stop steps.
That's great. Yeah, so that's true. Nice thing about one of this is that it's gonna be one of those things that we can put punctuation on during about a couple of months. Those are always nice. Um getting to that point, phase three, how about it kids? Phase three trail project. Um. I could have wrote ten page history on this one. Jenny, I would be insulting you because you're well versed in it than most people sitting at the stable are.
Almost done there.
We'd like to welcome you to our endless trail.
Three more weeks.
Um all seriousness.
Started at eighteen, didn't we? Win the grant.
We signed contracts like.
Nineteen, but the discussion began eighteen. Then there was a long dialogue with the academy. Thank you trivia. Um anyway. We are, I said, began. It stretches from academy for those not familiar to ten, uh along the old rail bed. It's it attaches to what we had as 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 a phased trail project going through town. Um something Jenny initiated, I think, right? In the uh through the stellar? Not stellar, excuse me.
Wasn't even regional. Uh Bangkok did a call.
There we go.
We responded to one right after we went local seller. It was the first call we got after we won stellar. And we're like, oh, they were right. People start calling you and giving you money. And you went stellar and that's what happened.
And and they did. Um the boardwalk. The beautiful boardwalk that goes over what can only be described as a hole. What a hole um is installed and rails will be put on. Um then the finishing of the paving. And I very much so look forward to my dental year is taking strolls down that path and remembering all the love. But in all seriousness, when it's complete, we I maybe do something as a ceremony. But i- if you haven't been back there, do take a walk on it. It's quite tranquil. Like it is relaxing and it's nice extension. I mean, joking aside, at first I was. Now, oh, falling crossing? Yeah. One of the things that was a concern, but no longer is a concern, was that section at ten, the crossing, but they. The campus security head has now realized that end up. Everything's fine there. One of the things I'd like you to consider if you have ideas, but. I would like to know what we do to keep golf carts off coming off of Academy Road. Um that's a wide opening and putting stakes there, they can go around them. I'm thinking that would be a great place for some artwork, statues or a bench. Um some.
Especially I like Sally's idea, two by fours.
Sitting Sally in a rocking chair maybe with shotgun. I'm thinking less primitive here, folks, but but hey, hell, I'm open to that idea.
Two of our trees.
We could, I've actually suggested that and watched them get destroyed, basically. No. I I think there is opportunity to to create a nice. But I guess third space there. There's a lot of real estate that we have there going into that trail that we can possibly use. Well.
Yeah, that's the thing, how much, what are easement upper space?
It's much more than trail. I remember the width on it, but.
I have it. I'll find out.
It worked out like two years before this.
Oh, I I'd forgotten that, Jenny.
I'm counting the like six months I tried to get it.
What we got was a fancy lease, but okay.
Yes, sir. Couple of months ago, we talked about that old faded sign.
You'll be relaxed to know we've got a new one coming this week. Have you noticed it's missing? We've removed the old faded signs from town.
Monday, okay.
Yep, well done. And we thank Bob for that. Him, Jerry and all the boys. Uh Cass Street, Jeff's the trail, getting back focused here a little bit. Uh completed this, uh the outline shows you where it's at. Uh it's Slate Street as well, I took that out, but um it's a, it's a nice path going through there. Also gives school access down that street. Um we're trying to connect through our easement. Uh to the paddocks and sandhill. Um we're currently negotiating working, making sure we can get it. Um today's phone call was. There were some questions. Um hopefully we satisfied those questions and we'll be able to put the trail easement through connecting the paddocks to.
Not to get you off topic and back on to the other face of that trail. The one on Academy Road that goes through their property that we have the easement on. I wonder if we could do another uh water. Station like we have in the park for dogs to drink water.
We have one of those in our. But when they did the park improvements with the Keller Rocks, all that playground. There was one that we bought before for that place. And our designer didn't like it, so we got the one. That we have now. So the old one is in the, but there's no, I don't know how you get water to it. We. It'd have to be on the north side if we supplied water.
I was gonna say.
It'd have to be on the north side. We couldn't do it on the other section.
Okay, cause we put that line in there to accept.
But that had to be on the north side.
Yeah.
Then yes, we could add that. We already have it, it's just not our install.
Yeah. That's kind of what I'm thinking, maybe something like that would help block the. Parts because it takes a hole and.
The cart problem is it's so wide open until you get to that little purple little bridge by the creek. You could stop it from there on, but you can't that first. Hundred feet of.
It's fun to hire a crossing yard if they're other yellow people.
Moving back to the project descriptions that I poured my loving heart into. It's okay.
He's heard.
Now, uh like I said, Cass Jefferson's gonna do, uh if we do do put in the trail, connect the paddocks and announce projects, so it's easy. Um seems to be favorable, but there's some questions today from the owner. Wait to hear back from him, sure.
Was the other parcel thinking about giving us an easement?
That's the one you started.
Yes, the.
Well, the original parcel.
Okay, that's who I thought.
The original parcel had some reservations and. And I think they was just wanting some past feelings and appreciate them entertaining you, but just didn't get anywhere with it. We need to find a solution. Um because the neighbors have issued, it's not anything. When you listen to them, I think dealing with a kind of, but we're not, um it's just kids going to the yard and stuff and it's it's problematic.
That's how they're going to school.
Of course they're, and and so there's nothing, there hasn't been vandalism as the neighborhood, there hasn't been any property destruction that I'm aware of.
It's nice to have kids want to want to.
And going around Jefferson's, your kids are gonna take the chores back, right? Like water. Where they go. Um I've had some developing projects. Up for you guys. Uh the I E, I I included I E tree resilience here. Um we're moving forward. Uh Emerson's been great. Uh been wonderful to work at. It's come from IU. Um we are, she is doing community outreach right now, getting some individuals involved. Uh the planting looks like, the planting looks like it's gonna be in October this year. Once again, get schools involved and um. Uh Davies will be leading that planting and doing the work and the care for those trees for first few years, so it's kind of a set it, forget it. We've had some great conversations because of this project. Um that extended beyond the project itself. Bob and I have been able to sit and talk with the tree commission and I feel like there's a better dialogue going on and cooperative. Understanding how we spend our our funding rather than seeing it fifteen and fifteen. Moving forward, there's a conversation with John and Bob and myself that we need to start prioritizing. And see a thirty thousand dollar commitment. That's what we've been spending per year as a town, which is huge. When you look at our population per capita, I think recommended is two to five dollars for per person. We're up in the neighborhood of twenty three to twenty four dollars per per capita, so we we do commit money to the trees, but how we spend it. Um one of the discussions that we were talking about it with John is bringing in our burst in this year and. Really taking a look at our population of trees and seeing where we're at. That way we can set a strategic plan for removal, maintenance and planting. Our feeling is there's probably gonna be a heavier emphasis in the next three years for planting. Uh or no, excuse me, removal, because we're having, yeah, strike that reverses. But we're looking at probably more removal, because we are seeing that. So recommitting those funds and not binding them with this even split. Seems a bit more logical, but to do that, we gotta have a plan in place and also some type of metric that says why we remove a tree. Which doesn't really exist currently. What is, what are we looking at? Having that arbiters report might help us develop that and also have one in hand, so we can do some triage and prioritization. Um getting the data again and seeing where we're at. Another talk too was just understanding the talent zones. Uh there are certain needs in different places. Decorative versus uh canopy versus Emerson kind of brought my mind to that as well in conversation, so this, it's been productive and. I didn't know I cared so much about trees. Having a cup of coffee and it's been educational, so it's really nice.
Hey Kevin, when you guys contacted our bruis? Obviously, we would do some sort of contract with that arborist through the tree commission. And we'll pay you to go do the study or whatever. Is there a way that that arborist could give us a price? Where, let's say a homeowner wanted to sign up to have their yard reviewed for a price, like the. Person says, yeah, well, you check out my trees, tell me which ones are dead or whatever. Like where we could have them opt into that, maybe they could give us. How they would go about that and I don't know if they do that.
My knee jerk would be public and private swirl.
Yes.
Figure out how to.
Leverage the fact that they'd be in town if they were. Sure, that is, homeowner would still pay a fee to have them look at their property while.
I I think we would do that through communication. We're bringing arborists in town to assess the public trees. And the street. However, we invite the private sector if they're interested and we can't promote a single vendor, but we can say they're gonna be here. And are welcome to calls and this is who we're using. I think we could do that, but it's dangerous to sort of promoting.
Oh, if you're a bigger arborist.
Yeah. I I don't know, like Bob said, that that swirl that private-public might become complicated, right? In terms of. Avoiding promoting a a vendor or a single store. But hey, you know, I know this guy.
I think Emerson was on hand at Lake Fest with a map that said add a tree, plant a tree or remove a tree. She had stickers. But maybe it's, it's something as simple as that of a map where people could put.
Maybe it's.
Yeah.
You know, maybe offer to do a contract or.
Yeah, I don't know.
It just seems like there's an awful lot of interest in using over right now.
I had notes. Yes, there is, and it's. Joking aside, I mean, it is wonderful to see that. I mean, honestly. We weren't to blame for a lot of it, but it does show a concern and an investment and. I think it's one of the nicer ways to form community. And again, going back to the idea of the logic behind the street lights out of the dunes, the same logic. Applies to trees. It's a quick way to integrate an area of town into town is the canopy itself. Right? And and I learned that from.
Well, and as as someone pointed out in T P L, the pear tree. I'm upset about. And I think the same person that hurt or massacred.
Tree massacre, massacre, but.
Yeah, I mean, in a sense, though, we, we don't have design ordinances right now for like a development. Or even a house that says you're required to. You know, we have one for putting in a sidewalk if you do a new house or new development. Might be interesting to go, you know. We don't want this type of tree planted if they're that god awful. Over, I don't know.
I would reference the D N R.
Yeah.
Basic species list and that tree's not on.
Right. Yeah, that was, it was nice. Someone pointed that out. Yeah, they think we should keep police people's yards.
That's a hundred percent it, but not theirs. It's hard to. Answered that flower here.
Main tree development has been on the mind, especially with the CRC and the redevelopment, probably in charge on it. We developed an R and P and I think it's workable and probably. On final draft, I'm still waiting for some of the comments to hit my box in the email, but. I've got something I think that was approved by the CRC. I'm gonna actually share it with you all tonight. Might as well do it now while I'm here. Oh, on the behalf of the CRC, wrote up a really close R and P somewhere in the last of mine. And it's. Intended on trying to attract some ideas and what we need. It evolved from what was kind of a streetscape structural combination buildings. What do we do about the Osborne block kind of thing? And it's evolved into much more for market analysis for in downtown revitalization. Understanding who we are, what markets are we missing? How can we improve the markets that are here? And what can we do in terms of continuity? A lot of this also represents some of the work that was done in the comprehensive plan as well. And wanted to make sure that. We get that comprehensive plan in place, not exclusively. It needs to build on it. Somebody came to pick up our comprehensive plan to try to implement it. This was vetted by a couple of. Firms that looked at it and and kind of directed my eye towards things that might be included in R and P. This is passed the idea to, was passed to the CRC and looked at favorable recommendation for it. Evaluation criteria, criteria in the timeline on the back are all adjustable. Probably looking probably more for quotes, but right now we're just calling it an R and P for convenience sake. The scope of work is really divided down into market assessment, customer, our customer and community analysis. A little less on that. We've done a lot of it already. Market gap identification is a big one for us and. I got what they did in Crawfordsville in the fall and really reshaping Crawfordsville downtown in terms of its market is. It's kind of interesting to me and this has been done in several other areas. One was. Down on the Ohio River in Ohio and I can't remember the name right now. It escapes me, but. And then the strategic recommendations. Some of the feedback is don't look, don't look at a single project. How are you tape or matriculating off a project? What is your, you know, your ten year, your three year or whatever? And and have some scaffolding in place to kind of guide our involvement. I'm holding back on this, so any feedback that you have in the next week or so would be greatly appreciated. Again, this is. About the third or fourth iteration of the document, but that's the great thing about Word documents. It's quick to change. The deliverables. We could also add an interview process, Kenny. I think you suggested that, that hasn't made it in yet. Apologize to kind of escape my mind till I just stare at you, but yeah, I think that we could also add an interview process for the council. And the CRC is that combined section or something. But yeah, I'd like to try to, this might be a priority. I don't know. So that was kind of my segue into the last part of this. There are things that I would ask of the council. I asked for project goals. Well, this, you can read that for yourself. Upcoming project considerations. This is where I really ask the council to consider for some guidance for us. For us being on the ground. Project workers, I guess, for our capacity as such. There are considerations that are in play. The theater is out of probate and moving. I think that's probably gonna be really driven by private. The Lake Max Association, the Theater Association. Kurt Dubauer and Mike Reddicky has gotten with him and there's a great relationship going there. I think it's driving it. I think they're planning a kickoff campaign in October for a cycle. Mike showed me the mockup of it and he's ready to go. So there's a lot of energy behind that project, but I see that as a, as as kind of a seed project. I think it's a. Great project in itself, but it's forming a really impressive network of cooperation. With financial cooperation as well as strategic planning. There's a lot of expertise being drawn upon this globally. For both the theater planning itself, the fundraising to marketing. We have a lot of local talent. And they're chipping in and they're very interested in this project. I think there's an opportunity to nurture this thing and expand it beyond the theater itself. There's, if we can build this kind of network and maintain it, there's a lot of opportunity for economic development to town. And there's a lot of interest that have been reached out to me. Reached out to me, not the other way around, expressing that. So I think I want to try to build on that and there's. Opportunity there, but in terms of the theater itself, there probably being asked of about fifteen to twenty foot, the parking lot to the west. And small price to pay, in my opinion, but that's council's opinion to build. They're looking at widening it. It's a tear down. We talked Indiana preservation. They're gonna come and look at it. See what the price point would be to preserve it, but it's just not functional. It's existing state, so. I do want to get them here because I want to look at the park and there might be opportunity there for preservation and grant funding for that. So sort of a, see a spot a slot, if you will, get them here and get them showing. Hotel is on our radar. The feasibility study came in this, our last week, Marty and I went around. With the feasibility study, Jessica was an individual from Wisconsin, Yunker. It's her last name, J. And she was impressed. It was a great day, sunny weather and all the sailboats were out. Nothing. She really loved the idea of Bennett's Block. Uptown to the coffee shop. What a great place for our hotel and. What? Yes, you're right. No, probably not yet, but anyway, we didn't say that. We did happen to drive by the area parking shop five times, just in case you're wondering, saying, wow, look at that big blank green space there. I don't know where a hotel would go. Doesn't matter right now. We're trying to, we're meeting tomorrow on a phone conversation. With the academy and Settle Myers is gonna join in and they've got some cooperation there. Just want to follow up on some questions. She was also very interested in what the future of the Earth State Golf. Transition, maybe. I don't know. We haven't heard. Don't know. But the hotel is something that seems to have some traction, but at least we'll have the data to know one way or another, right? Because it tossed around often. Bob and I would like to put in front of you guys and see if it's a priority. We've been talking about the next C C M G grant maybe process. Take a look at South Main, especially with the stormwater drain. Drainage there, we get a lot of water sitting in pockets. It's pocketed, but there is some water there. So it would be an application for resurface and and stormwater project there with.
Junction with.
But it also, go ahead.
Did you see they just came out?
Please.
They're gonna open. Application for now or next year and there will only be one round. Yeah, I'll send you also. I I've written. Now, on that upside, our match went down to twenty percent.
Yeah.
And the rumors about the wheel tax.
I think that's gonna be a. No, because it's a population of five thousand.
But you're competing in a pool for a lot less money. They've cut how much money they're putting in C C M G.
For the smaller communities, but they also air tag money specifically for the smaller.
Well, fifty million is going to Indianapolis, Marion County. Twenty million will go to tracks projects and a hundred million will go to. Six hundred plus communities.
Okay, so they didn't.
Keep for that.
They didn't tier that based upon populations. There's so much rumor that they were.
There was a while where they were gonna have a cut for eleven or twelve. That are over. However, many hundreds of thousands and then everyone else. Yeah, it's just everyone. But also I'll send you guys the info. I've wrote it up for our company, so I'll just send it to both of you.
Thank you. Okay.
I'll pop it here.
Something I would like to put in front of the council to consideration is Kavler Park. Did a great job. A lot of money, but a lot of energy went into building it. We're at a point where. We may need to do some improvements. The sporting fields, the pathway, the maintenance of it. I don't think there's a clear articulated understanding of whose responsibilities they are. Not that it doesn't exist, it's just not. On the minds of people when the conversation comes up. The one thing I would like guidance on, but I think that. I'm wondering if a well out there would be advised, some type of water source because of the trees that are planted out there. It's an area where we can put in more trees. They've talked about a community garden between the softball field and Mary Manor. That was an idea that's been pitched around and just for the overall maintenance of it. It would also provide irrigation for the sporting fields that are out there that are just one step above a sheep pasture sometimes and kids are playing on. It's just a thought and I don't know what the price point of a well would be. I don't know if that's the right solution for water out there. But it's something that seems to be a need. Bob and I have talked about maybe doing some buildings. On that pathway instead of that limestone, make it a little, little bit more robust of a path to build on. Also equipment and some funding. I would not want to see. I wouldn't suggest that the town conference go to that, but trying to get some private attraction support for it again. Just like with theater and trying to build on that community development. It's something that I'd like to try to put out there, but just if you have thoughts, guidance, advice from the past, right, on that project. It would be great leverage. Maybe I'm misguided thinking that there should be a well out there or something, but there's history.
Technically, if we can make an investment ourselves, CRC could, we could.
Yeah.
But technically, that was an Oprah project through stellar and. The way it was set up is they, school acted as a subrecipient and it became a really big deal early on in stellar because. You can't just do a stellar project on any of the property, right? They had to agree to make it. They have to agree. It's their property. It's not ours. So we had to do an agreement between the town and the school. Really out the gate, like that was the first thing I think we met on stellar. Stellar because. Even though they, we want it, they were concerned about that particular project because it wasn't clearly defined in our stellar application. How that was gonna work. You have to have a sponsoring municipality obviously for an Oprah project and they were serving as a subrecipient. Then we had our own projects. We didn't have a subrecipient, so they made a sign and agreed with the school right away. It doesn't mean we could do something there, you know, like CRC has funded a couple of improvement projects at school. I don't know if the town has, but.
It's just an opportunity, maybe I appreciate that.
I do think it's a great space, especially for the the neighborhoods over there. You see people use that pad. You see C Y C uses the playground. Obviously, there was some work done on the fields which improved the access for the school. And I agree with you that it should definitely be on the radar.
Yes, guys, and bringing the school into the conversation as well for no other reason. Obviously, there's. There's not a fair understanding of this works, right? Bringing up maybe resurrect.
Yeah, and I was an old superintendent, the guy before Karen.
Yeah.
That did that, really established that project. That's what he wanted. Essentially, and Karen got there after.
In the immediate, in the immediate past. We have not at the school had a maintenance guy in like. Regular full-time maintenance guy, while even when Trevor was there, our maintenance guy. Just recently resigned. Ill. Had some health problems, so we haven't had a maintenance guy probably full-time in two, two, two and a half years he's been there, so. It's, I think it's basically he's been getting moved if I'm not mistaken, so. That, that I think also probably plays into. Not having somebody that doesn't know that they're supposed to do that. It's the big thing. Administration that doesn't. Outside of, hey, we're gonna move that field.
Yeah, that makes sense.
One of the quick kickoff, the electrical sound bathrooms and upgrades to public performance areas of the park. I'd like to try to get that into that private conversation as well. Seeing, you know, the theater is just one part of a larger entity down there. And that really resonated with some conversations with private individuals. There's some money there for donation and taking that off the plate of CRC or somebody or or park fund type thing. Really the goal there unless you guys disagree, but it's something that there's conversations going around about and if that, if if something gets more solidified, I'll let you know. As it goes, but it's alive. The last thing I really need your help on and and some ideas and guidance is town hall. We're really starting to have conversations about doing something here to reinvent the space. One of the questions, the driving question is, is it, do you have enough capacity here? Is it just renovation? Do we need to expand? I've heard individuals, Bill has talked to me and it really made my mind think maybe it's just actually you need to redesign and reinvent the space. That's here and I started looking at it. I think there's some to that. Bob has shared some past plans. We have lots of examples of past plans. Talking with Karen this morning, a couple of firms have reached out for some interest. To come in, take, do some exploratory. I'd like to, very similar to wastewater, I'd like to get some data for you guys to explore and then here's some marching orders. So the next couple of months, I'd like to bring some data to you, some cost analysis, same thing as wastewater. I want to get this information in your hands on some active projects, especially the wastewater in the town hall. And get some ideas in front of you and then if we could reconvene and reverse the flow of this, it would be greatly appreciated in January. Where you guys, after getting you the data that you need for decision-making. And to examine it, maybe have come back and get some thoughts from you guys, how you want us to move forward. And and prioritize and explore the ideas. That makes sense. And this isn't comprehensive by any means. The water meters weren't included in here. We're gonna be replacing lead pipes. Right? Kenny invented an email. There's a lot of things going on. And we're gonna get a new peer vendor in March. I'll do those during updates as much as possible. But really, the next work session in January. Or even December, it's up to you guys, but just getting this kind of reversed back and say, here's where we think you should move and focus effort. After trying to get you some information to base. So I'll be doing the next couple of months, I've been doing some data collection. Trying to get some, some price points for you, some information. Bob will also be exploring different vendors, different ideas on the wastewater. So and Karen will be doing her, what she does so well with the budget. Here Karen, where's the money coming from? And try to get some information.
I like that probably our projects on there, similar one. For me is. The, the property we've got. Building over it. With potential other. Design down there or potential expansion of that property. I don't know. I think we should add that space. Design down there or potential expansion of that property, I don't know. I think we should add that space. Like studying that space.
You have to get careful, people, but I do.
Yes. Totally understand that. Hey, it's just a. There's also the weird intersections that parcel and there is other potential down there. I think we should be looking at the space, kind of the way you're talking about looking at Cavalier. What would it look like, or what could it look like, you know, maybe it's just someone studying those two spaces. Says here's some options. And I'll, you know, get away from the idea of the roundabout.
Hey Kevin, one more question is under project goals. It's uh easy to identify service and retail. Harder to identify experiment, experimental, experiential markets. Um including events.
For the experiential part, yes.
Are, are there any, any retail thoughts that include experiential markets?
No, I'm, I'm hoping that they can provide some. I think that's kinda.
So in your mind right now, it's more of festivals and events and activities that happen.
Yes, but also the development of that, as you reinvent a space, say for example, if you see down by the lake is an opportunity. To, to develop a venue of live performance and having art festivals and finding that more of a, if you're zoning. For example, if you're looking at economic kind of market zones, that's kind of a more recreational area from down the parks there. What, what kind of experiences can we provide there? Kayak service, right? That kind of what really tourism brings and stuff. And, and that kind of, what kind of experiences can we provide and call them that couple with the idea of the lake and the, the existing environment we have? I don't, I have feelings about it, it's awesome, I'm not an expert. I mean, that's what I'm looking for. I want data, I want expert. To drive decision-making for all of us.
Yeah, it's kind of like, I don't think we ever expected to have live bands on things. And the need for electric there, but we eventually did that. I think it started with food clubs and a festival and it's just built.
How do you build out of it too? Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you very much.